I'd like to call to order the August 28, 2018 city council meeting and we're going to open a joint meeting with the school board.
I'd like to call to order the Bristol Virginia School Board's joint meeting with the city council on August 28.
Please take a moment of silence with me. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right pursuant, closed session pursuant to 2.237-11A6 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved where if made public initially, the financial interest of the government unit would be adversely affected proprietary. I'd like a motion in a second.
Move that we enter.
Got a motion, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I had to turn on my microphone. A move that we entered into executive session for the reasons stated.
Second. Motion, Mr. Hartley, second. Mr. Osborne, please call the roll.
Fleaner.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Do I have a motion for the reason in closed session?
Make the motion.
Good reason.
Pursuant to section 2.237-11A6 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved where if made public initially, the financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected specifically. I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following matters, discussion of detailed proposals received under the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002, PPEA.
Second. Motion in a second. Who's done?
Mr. Fleischer.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes. That will move to closed session.
By roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor.
No.
Mr. Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Hold on. Did you have done this?
I did.
Okay, so you're saying executive session, we should discuss that we're not part of the executive session?
Refuse to answer.
Can we take a quick recess?
Sure. Council's recessed. It's on the fact that executive session was not certified. City Attorney, please have the superintendent come up and go over what was discussed in the executive session.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Of course, we had a, we've been working on this project for a long time. We, our school board has decided to begin negotiations or pre-negotiations with one firm and one team. We think that we have a really good plan that meets a lot of the requirements that the city has requested. We were, had an opportunity to discuss many of those plans and the details of those plans in closed session. At this point, that is still confidential information. However, we do anticipate that on September the 10th, I'll make a recommendation to our school board to approve, going into final negotiations with the team. And at that point, within 10 days, we will be posting online and making available to the public all the information that I think the public will need to have to provide input as we begin public hearings into the school construction process.
All right, thank you. We would like to close the joint meeting.
Sure. You expecting more?
Certification of closed session meeting as such, the Bristol, Virginia School Board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting and only public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were considered.
So is it? You want some questions?
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So the joint meeting's hereby closed. All right, so now I'd like to call to order the official city council meeting for August the 28th, 2018. Only comments I got are, we just grand opened the Hobby Lobby up at exit seven, or exit five. I think there was a big crowd. I think that's a very nice retail establishment. I think it's pretty obvious to folks that that will become an anchor for that development. The excitement around Hobby Lobby is as much as I've seen on other type businesses. So I think there'll be others to follow Hobby Lobby. It's a very good managed organization. So if you've read a lot about Hobby Lobby, they've got some very good ethical background and things that they strictly comply to as a management team. So that's why a lot of times they've been successful. But it's a good place to go shop. It's a very nice store. It's one of the best ones I've been in. And so there was a big crowd up there. So we wish Hobby Lobby all the best. Schools back in session. The athletic sports program's underway. So we ask that everybody support the school of all the events that they have, the football games, the band events. So these kids deserve our support. I know if you're up there in front of big crowds, you want to see, you know, faces that you know that are supporting you. So let's get out and support them. I think it's a home game this week against John Battle. So that's always a big one. So let's, let's get out and support the Bearcats. Council comments? All right, City Manager.
Counsel, I just want to let everyone know that our ambulance for the city of Bristol has been up and running for close to a month now. Things have gone smooth with that transition and we're seeing some response times in its service area being a little bit faster than what we had anticipated. So that's a good thing for the citizens here in the city of Bristol. I'll also say that we are working on some very exciting projects here in the city of Bristol. Hope to have some good news within the next three to four weeks that I can provide so that everybody can rest assured that we're doing exactly what we need to do here in the city of Bristol, make a recovery like has never been seen before in this town.
Matters to be presented by members of the public, not agenda items. We've got to sign up by David and Sharon Heel.
Yes. I actually was able to talk to you while you were in session to look at the need for information used in the rest of the question.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next person is Nancy Marney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. For the last few years, and particularly last year I'm referring to, I have been very closely associated with the city's financial situation. I'm very aware of what it is, what it was, and what has been done. I'm very knowledgeable. I have a suggestion and I hope you will take it. Stay the course. Stay the course you set up for the one more year. Because within that one year, probably only eight months, but within this one year, we will know what the state of Virginia can and will do for us. We will know what the federal government can and will do for us. We will have the answers to some questions that we have, we have now that are unanswered. But we will have those answers within a year. And we will also have the answers to some other things that are pending. But gentlemen, stay the course. Stay the course. And then at the end of 12 months, I really think it'll be around eight months is what I project, at the end of that time, I think we will have a handle on what the situation is concerning the city of Bristol, Virginia, what our financial outlook is at that particular point. And we will know if we can take another positive step. And if we can take another positive step, we'll know better what direction we can go. But do remember, we are only one step from right where we came. We're only one step away from what we were in, which was bad trouble. And the vultures are already circling again. But in a year, I think if you'll stay steady, it'll be hard, I know it'll be hard. Stay steady. Stay the course until this year is over or very close to the end of the year, then you will have answers you do not have now and you will be able to make decisions you can't make now, but you will be able to make with some validity within the year.
Thank you, Ms. Marney. All right, next person, Michael Pollard.
Thank you, gentlemen of the council. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. A good bit of my thunder has been stolen at this point. I did want to remind the council and the audience that the Bearcat versus Trojan game is this coming Friday at 7:00 PM and that it is, that it will be located in Bristol, Virginia, so you don't have to go anywhere for it. And further note that Hobby Lobby has orange T-shirts for about $3 and adult size and about $4.50 and extra large sizes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to the regular agenda. Closed session pursuant to 2.237-11A7 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, legal matters and closed session pursuant to 2.237-11A5 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, unannounced business prospect. Need a motion and a second.
Move we enter into executive session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Osborne, second, Mr. Wingard, please call the roll.
Fleaner.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Clerk, please let the record reflect that Councilman Fleaner left prior to the start of executive session. All right, by roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, on item three on the agenda. This is considered a joint proclamation with Bristol, Tennessee to proclaim the week of September 23rd through 29th, 2018 as Child Passenger Safety Week and the day of September 25th, 2018 as Buckle Up for Life Day. Staff report.
Hello. I'm Melanie Fleaner. I'm the office administrator for the Bristol, Virginia Fire Department. I became a certified child passenger safety technician in April of this year. I'm also part of an informal committee made up of other certified techs and child passenger safety advocates in the Tri-Cities. Car crashes are a leading cause of death for children and properly securing children in safety seats goes a long way in keeping them safer. It's incredibly important to use the correct seat for the child and to have the seat installed properly. Child Passenger Safety Week is September 23rd through September 29th, 2018, and we want to generate awareness about child passenger safety in our community and encourage people to have their car seats checked. A couple of firefighters in the department are also certified CPS techs and we perform child safety seat checks at the fire stations. People stop in and we make sure that they have the appropriate car seat for their child. Then we offer hands-on assistance for proper use of child restraint systems and safety belts. National Seat Check Day is Saturday, September 29th, and certified CPS techs will be available at Toyota of Bristol from 11:00 AM until 1:00 PM to provide safety tips and car seat installation instructions. And the purpose of the proclamation that's before you today is for the cities of Bristol, Virginia and Tennessee to encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children, and this includes the proper installation and use of car seats.
All right, thank you. Our C.C. and no one signed up for public comment, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating car safety, Safety Week, whereas children are our future and it is the responsibility of parents and caregivers to keep America's children safe, and whereas car seats are required by law for children traveling in motor vehicles, and whereas research analyzed by Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center shows that in the U.S. only one in four child car seats are properly installed, and whereas research shows when installed and used correctly, child safety seats decrease the risk of a fatal injury by 71% among infants, 54% among toddlers, and 45% among child, children of the age of four to eight. And whereas parents and guardians must make sure that children aged 12 and under always ride in the backseat buckled up in properly installed child safety seats, and a rear-facing child safety should never be placed in the front seat of a motor vehicle equipped with a passenger airbag. And whereas Bristol, Virginia and Bristol, Tennessee encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children, and whereas Buckle Up for Life is committed to working closely with our partners and safety advocates such as cities of Bristol, Virginia and Bristol, Tennessee to help parents and caregivers make the kind of choices that will keep children alive and safe. And whereas children riding in the right seat for their age and size can be accomplished by a car seat inspection that ensures the safety of a child while traveling. And whereas the fire departments of both cities and Buckle Up for Life representatives provide community car seat checks periodically and will check a car seat for any parent arriving at the fire station. Now therefore, we, Kevin Mumpower and Margaret Firebrand, the mayors of Bristol, Virginia and Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the week of September 23rd through 29th, 2018 as Child Passenger Safety Week and day of September 25th, 2018 as Buckle Up for Life Day. We encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and the tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time. I'll go ahead and sign it. Now we need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hartley, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, item four, quarterly financial update. Staff report.
Mr. Reed is.
This would be the chief financial officer, would it not?
We'll discuss. So, actually, the charter says that she gives that to the city manager for presentation to council, but we've discussed that and I think things will change here in the near future. So, this is the year-end unaudited report. It's on the cash basis for the city of Bristol, Virginia. It's a revenue and expenditure update. All right, here is what we budgeted for 1718 for revenues was 54.2 million and we actually collected 55.5 million. We were 102.4% of what we budgeted. Expenditures were at 90%, or roughly 91% of what we budgeted. The budget amount was 54,232,357. Actual expenditures was 49.2 million and that left us a balance of $6.259 million on June 30th of 2018. The solid waste disposal fund, the revenues were 6.4 million. The, were budgeted 6.7 was actually part of the revenues. Part of that was from debt, from bond proceeds, I believe, is that right? And then the expenditures were 5.6 million as compared to what was budgeted at 6.4. So they were at 87.45%. Your capital projects fund was budgeted 12 million, 6.7 was the revenues that came in in the year. Expenditures were 5.1, left us a balance of $1.6 million. Here's a general, general fund revenue summary. The revenue from local sources was budgeted at 34.7 million, actual was 35.3 million for 101.66%. Revenue from the Commonwealth is 14.6 million that was budgeted. Actual revenue was 15.58 million for 106.61% of actuals to budget. Revenue from the federal government was 3.9 that was budgeted, 3.6 was received at 93.06%. And other financing sources budgeted of 891,000 and we had 923,103%. So total revenues, once again, 54.23 was budgeted and 55.53 was received. Our general fund expenditure summary, here you can see that every department except the schools was over or was under what we budgeted, but the school, the reason they are at 100.06% is simply because we started charging them for fuel this year. It would not have been over budget had it not been for the fuel charge and the way we accounted for that. Our general fund balance was 6.259 million on June 30th of 2018. Two million of that 6.2 was budgeted for. Our actual revenues exceeded the budget by 2.4%. And how we came to that, we had an additional 660,000 in delinquent real estate taxes that was collected, 325,000 in delinquent personal property taxes that was collected, and there was an additional $433,000 in other local taxes that were not budgeted that was part of our revenue. Our actual expenditures were below budget at 90.86%. We were able to do that through the vacant positions that we held open and we instituted an essential purchase-only policy last August, which made a huge difference. And then there was $500,000 in carryover funds to 18 and 19. And here's the graph that Ms. Bradlin loves so much because as the blue gets bigger, she gets happier. That is how our, our funds have, how we receive funds throughout the year. 64% was local, 28% is from the state, the 6% is from the federal government and 2% is from other financing sources. And here's how the breakdown went through our budget throughout the year. 29% of our budget went to public safety, 15 and a quarter was health, welfare and social services, 14% to education, 10% to public works, 6.65% were transfers. Our debt was 6% of our total budget, parks and rec was 5.74%. Government administration was 4.58%, 3% judicial administration. Non-departmental, which includes transit, is at 2.5% and community development was at 1.58% of our budget. Here's our other local taxes breakdown. Local sales and use tax, we were $239,000 over what we budgeted. Consumer utility tax was $4,982 over budget. Cigarette taxes was $120 over budget and that is simply because Ms. Bradlin is so good at her job, she was able to get it that close. Lodging taxes were $6,141 more than anticipated and our restaurant meals tax was $9,198. Our admission taxes were off this year by 16,000 along with our communication taxes and in this current fiscal year, 18, 19, we did anticipate adjustments and made those adjustments going forward for those two taxes. Here are your graphs. You can see our local sales and use tax increased from fiscal year 17. Our consumer utility taxes stayed basically flat for the past four years. Here you have your cigarette taxes. It was down a little bit from fiscal year 17. It was online with 16 but up from 15. Lodging taxes were down from fiscal year 17 just slightly, however, they are above 15 and 16. Restaurant meals taxes, that was a continued decline for the past four years, however, we did budget for that this past year and you, as you recall from the previous slide, we were almost on target with that budget amount. Our restaurant meals taxes was $9,146 above what we had budgeted for. So that was taken into account. Once again, we really like to highlight this, we did not hit the tax anticipation note and haven't, we have not had to use that since 2010. Our cash balance on June 30th was 14.224 million and currently $5 million is sitting in an investment account earning interest, and that's the first time in quite a while that the city has been able to do that. Our cash balance on June 30th of 17 was 7.4 million and on June 30th of 2016, 6.8 million. So you can see over the course of two years, there's been a tremendous change in the city of Bristol's finances. We've roughly doubled our cash balance in two years. Our solid waste disposal fund summary, 1.159 million was the balance for the fiscal year. That is made up, 493,000 was from debt proceeds, 240,000 was budgeted for the liner, which left you with a balance of $425,000. This is on the cash basis. This is not your final audited numbers and this covers our operational expenditures. We need to continue to look at the bottom line because on the books, there's a $17 million net loss at this time. And we need to start figuring out how to take care of that $17 million net loss. Our capital projects fund, we have a balance of 1.6 million. Bond proceeds were 1.296 million of that. That leaves a remaining balance of 221,000 for unspent local transfers and 86,000 that was related to prior year receivables for basically a balance of a little over $300,000. This is the first time in a while that the city has been able to carry forward cash in our capital projects fund in order to fund capital needs going forward. Summary, cash basis, we're still preparing information for the CAFR. We are closer to the unassigned fund balance goal and hopefully we'll be able to give you a more definite number in November or December when our CAFR is prepared and sent back to us and our capital projects cash balance. That's exciting for the city because we're now starting to be able to put money aside for those capital project needs. Any questions?
Just make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's really good to see that you're in cash balance, having been here and seen that for four years now and you talked about that turnaround. Takes a little while to build it up and we're still not completely out of the woods yet, but that is really good to see and to know we have that cash balance as well as finally being able to put some money aside in an investment account, not having to wait. I think that is really good news that shows, again, just the changes that have been made over the last few years. And, you know, going forward, I think it's something we need to look at because some of these savings, you know, we get a little lucky, one-time payments, but also purchases and vacant positions, there's only things you can hold off for so long that, you know, we need to kind of always look at that. But it's really good news and I appreciate the work that both you, Mr. Reed, and the CFO have done along with the department heads to try to end the year on a good note.
It's been a team effort and I can't say enough about the department heads trying to make this work and do what's right for the city. They are to be commended because they do watch every dollar and they come to me and Tamara on a daily basis to make sure they're not doing something they shouldn't do. So they are to be commended and as I said, it's a team effort and we have a team that's moving forward and not looking back.
Well, I wanted to say a couple of things. One, this is great work. I mean, when you look at where we came from and you look at these numbers, it's a dramatic three steps forward, right? So that's the good news. Revenues are up, expenses and expenditures are down. We're not spending money we don't need to be spending and you're looking after it like a hawk and that's what it takes to see, to make those numbers become reality. So now we've got a couple of other good news items. BBU sold OptiNet. There will be an amount of money that comes out of that transaction. We don't know the exact amount, but it will be significant. So that's another significant amount of money that will come our way, that will potentially put our reserve fund at the threshold that we all targeted. And so our plan is to establish these very restricted funds, like a capital fund. So we have the funds already set aside for big capital expenditures, which we haven't done in the past, like equipment, like fire trucks and so forth. Set aside a restricted fund potentially for the school system for future, you know, projects we need for buildings. So we need to use that money wisely, but set it aside, restrict it so you can't use it for other purposes. So that's good news. The albatrosses we still have, the landfill. So we're looking at the landfill. We're looking at it very hard. The state's in helping us look at it. So we are going to figure out something on the landfill. landfill. We've closed the gap from a million dollars to maybe half a million, but there's, it's still a gap, and plus we've got that big debt that's sitting out there that it took to establish the landfill, so that's all got to be dealt with. And then the things we're looking at now, which I think we're, it refines what we're doing financially, is we're looking at, as an example, the lodging taxes. You know, you look at the whole year as a, you know, one lump sum, but when you really look at the lodging over the twelve months, you know, it dips in the winter months and it climbs in the springtime and summer, and it dips again, and, you know, it's a pretty normal cycle for lodging taxes. Well, we need to do something about the dips. We need to get creative, try to get those dips up, you know, have some winter time events, have something that brings people to the hotels more relevant in the winter time, you know, so we start to maximize the revenue. So we're starting to talk about ways to get with businesses, start talking about what drives their decisions, you know, to help get all of our revenues up. So if we can keep staying the course like Ms. Marnie said earlier, and just be very disciplined at our expenses, and keep looking at all the revenues very distinctly and focused to say, what can we do to improve them, we're going to be in pretty good shape in a couple more years. I mean, I would say we're going to be in really good shape. And then it all comes to making sure we pay our debt obligations, right? Just make sure we have those debts that we have to obligate money to, that we've got them paid out for ten, fifteen, twenty years, so we, you know, have a timeline and you can see it, and we set aside a restricted fund for that. We know they're there, they're not going away, but we don't let anybody blow the money, so when we get these cash amounts, we have a reserve fund that's set aside specifically for debt service. And so we don't ever get into this again, is the next item, right? Which we're working on, how do we approach the legislature on setting up thresholds and triggers so that this city and other cities have a, basically a boundary, that, you know, you can do what you need to do within a boundary, but you can't go outside a certain reasonable bounds, because when you do, you get in trouble, and that's what happened to Bristol. So we want to pull that back and set some reasonable boundaries that the state would support, and change our charter so that we at least say, this is the way it should be done. And hopefully that'll put some discipline in future councils and future years going forward, so, so I'm happy where we are.
I'm excited.
Work's not over, but I'm happy where we are.
We're definitely headed in the right direction, and you know, when you're setting up a budget, you've got to look into, you know, the next week, next month, next year, three years. You've got to plan ahead, because if you don't, it'll sneak up and bite you, and that's been a big problem in this city, is not looking forward enough to maneuver around the obstacles that you know are coming. Sooner or later, they're coming. Things don't last forever, things wear out, things break. So I'm really excited. This is great news tonight, and, you know, like Ms. Nancy said, stay the course, and we'll get to where we need to be, because we are definitely heading in the right direction.
And then we'll know we're there when the police department, the fire department, all these departments that haven't had the equipment they've needed for years, all of a sudden, we're now able to plan that out. We're able to, you know, upgrade our equipment, get what we need for public safety, and start becoming a city again, because that's where you need, that's where you spend your money. Public safety, schools, I mean, that's what we're here for. So when we, when we're doing those things, you'll know we've kind of arrived, right? We're actually, you know, back in the saddle, and we're doing what we need to do as a city. So, good, good job, I mean, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item five. Consider a public hearing on proposed realignment of Goods Alley Right-of-Way and conveyance of property from the city of Bristol, Virginia to Larry G. Denny and Deborah Denny. So I hereby open the meeting. Staff comment.
Mr. Mayor, remaining members of council. This is something we brought before you guys several months ago. Mr. Osborne was not a member yet, so I'll kind of give a little brief description of what happened before. This was a redesign of the Good Street parking lot to better utilize it and to provide a little bit more parking accessibility there for downtown. And during that redesign, what we determined was that this one corner, which is located adjacent to the Denny's property, was unusable for us because of the size of it. It wasn't big enough to actually handle an adequate parking lot. So one of the other things we wanted to do was put a handicap accessible ramp from the Good Street parking lot, Straits at State Street, and we thought that we could maybe sell this piece of property to the Denny's and be able to utilize that money to pay for the handicap ramp and move forward with that. The process was a little longer than what we anticipated. Our surveyor, Chuck Brewster, did a fantastic job of doing a layout for the handicap accessible ramp, and also, we found out that there needed to be a realignment of an alleyway, which was back there, an ancient alleyway for horses and carriages. And so what we ended up doing was a lengthy process of dividing the alleyway up between the adjacent property owners, realigning the alley to tie back into Good Street, and then subdividing the property again so that we were able to offer it for sale to the Denny's. So that's where we are now. This is the first step of this that we'll bring to you. The next step later on will be the other end of the property, the other end of the Good Street lot closer to Sessions. But tonight, what we're here for is to get approval to offer this property for, for purchase by the Denny's.
Any questions?
Refresh our memory on the purchase price?
What we did was we took the square footage, and we used fair market value, and it came up to about fifteen hundred dollars. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay.
It's a very small piece of property.
I know it's a small piece of property.
But, and that's what, that was the reason we couldn't utilize it. It wasn't even big enough to put a single parking space on. But we figured that they could utilize it, we could get a little bit of money to use on the ramp.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, public comment, we've got one person signed up, Michael Pollard.
Thank you, my name is Michael Pollard, I live at 101 Ashley Drive. One thing that struck me as odd here is that the strip of the parking lot is considered right-of-way. I wondered, first off, if it's customary that a part, a portion of a parking lot, including perpendicular parking spaces, is normally dedicated as a right-of-way? Is that normal?
I can answer that a little bit. The section that you see of right-of-way is actually an old alleyway. And so what we actually had to do was vacate this portion of the alleyway, and then realign the alley so that it tied into Good Street. So this portion was then vacated halfway to this, this property owner, and the other half back to us as the adjacent property owner. Then this whole section joined together, and then made available for purchase.
That then leads into my second question, and I was wondering if it may be more appropriate to extinguish the right-of-way so that it simply becomes city property that we can then deal with as we see fit, rather than in the future needing to deal with the right-of-way on it, which is not a road anyway, it's going through a parking lot.
One of the reasons that we retain alleyways is just in case that something happens to one of these other adjacent property owners. We don't want to vacate an alleyway and then in the near future end up having to, having something for them to have to gain access to the back of their buildings. So the only reason we vacated this section was because we were able to tie it back into Good Street and still provide access on this. So this, this right-of-way, we may at some point vacate it, but it would be a different process.
Ms. Wood?
It's currently going through a, I mean, the right-of-way is currently crossing a number of marked parking spaces. I know this is off-topic from the intended sale, but it is part of the right-of-way discussion.
Mr. Pro, Ms. Reeves, if we vacated the right-of-way, then both property owners on either side of the center line, here we go, is that typically? So, I mean, it's part of that, by keeping it as a right-of-way, keeps it in the city's control.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So basically, by keeping the right-of-way, another ten-foot remains under the city's control when it would revert to the neighboring property owner? Is that basically what it comes down to?
The right-of-way that you see?
On the, that was vacated, that was originally vacated, and we retained half of that. The adjacent property owner retained the other half, and then the entire lot was re-subdivided, and then that's what's going to be for sale. The, what you see as the right-of-way is actually an alleyway. And so we haven't vacated the alleyway, we actually extended, we turned the alley at a forty-five, at a ninety-degree angle and tied it back into Good Street. So we are still retaining the alleyway. We vacated the alley behind the Denny property at that far corner, and that will all be sold as one lot. And so then that lot will continue from State Street all the way to Good Street, and the city will own no property there, other than the city right-of-way from the streets.
Right, and I understand that portion of, my question is concerning the, the portion of the right-of-way that's being dealt with, particularly with the realignment. Since it's not actually being used as an alley, it's being used through a parking lot.
It's a city-owned parking lot, and the reason we realigned the alley was so that we would still at some point be able to access that alleyway if necessary to the backs of those properties.
But it's still city property, though?
It is.
So I guess I'm looking to potentially streamline things in the future, rather than needing to do things at two steps. If it's city property, the city's free to sell it or use it as they see fit?
We could have subdivide, we could have vacated the entire alleyway, but that would have involved every adjoining property member down through there, and they would have had to have wanted this. We didn't feel the need to do that, because it wasn't a request. The only reason that we vacated the right-of-way on the other, vacated the alleyway on the other side was because we were looking to offset the cost of the handicap ramp. So if they come to us and want to vacate that alley, then we certainly can do that in the future.
Okay, have the adjoining property owners, since this will affect the transport, transportation past their businesses, have they been notified and given opportunity to comment?
All the, all the adjoining property owners were notified of the subdivision.
Okay, so they could be here tonight if they wanted to be?
They could.
And their very absence from this meeting would tend to indicate that they tend to agree with the decision? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, hereby close the hearing. All right, item six, consider approval of proposed realignment of Goods Alley Right-of-Way and conveyance of property from the city of Bristol, Virginia to Larry G. Denny and Deborah A. Denny. Staff report.
Counsel, the counsel, the staff report be the same exact staff report that was previously presented for the public hearing.
Do I have the pleasure of counsel and a motion in a second?
Yeah, I move that we realign Goods, Goods Alleyway Right-of-Way and convey the property to Larry and Deborah Denny.
In a second.
Got a motion from Mr. Hartley, a second, from Mr. Osborne, any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Moonpower?
Yes. All right, item seven, consider a second reading and adoption of an ordinance to adopt rules and procedures for city council. Staff report.
Counsel, section four point oh-four of the city charter states, "The council shall, subject to the provisions of this charter, adopt its own rules and procedures by ordinance." The rules and procedures have been discussed at the July tenth, twenty, and twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, and also on August fourteenth, city council meetings. The full text has been included in the agenda packets for each meeting, and the public has had an opportunity to comment. And not only has the public had an opportunity to comment, but councils also had opportunity to comment on these rules and procedures as well. Notice of a proposed ordinance was advertised in the Bristol Herald-Pulleyure on eight six, eight seven, and eight eight of two thousand and eighteen, and per the charter, chapter four, section four point oh-nine, minor changes may be made after a first reading, provided they do not materially change the ordinance. This version removes the word taped from item one A two point two, and removes the word elected from item one C point two.
Is it it? Okay, one person signed up, Michael Pollard.
Thank you, gentlemen of the council, my name is Michael Pollard, I live at 101 Ashley Drive. It's not my intention to dominate the council meeting tonight. At the last meeting, one of the council members took objection to the fact that there were no, no opportunities for basically punishing an offending member. I did submit a proposal to that effect, both to the city manager and to yourself, Mr. Mayor, and I was wondering, since that has not been brought up tonight, if the members of the council were apprised of that, if there were any thoughts concerning it. It just seemed that Mr. Fleener had a point, and concerning, well, a law with no teeth, as it were.
Okay, is it it?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, what's the pleasure of council?
I move to adopt.
I'll second.
Second, second reading.
By caption only?
By caption only.
I second that.
Okay. Got a motion, Mr. Wingard, second, Mr. Osborne, by count, caption only. Any council discussion?
I would just say very briefly that this is all basic comments and stuff, and it's readily apparent that we need to have rules of order, and I see no reason why we shouldn't all just vote to approve this, you know, this evening.
I would just add, I think this is something that, you know, if there's ever any additions or something, as part of your annual reorganizational meeting, especially at least, if not every year, definitely probably every two years, once you have new members come on councils, if somebody wants to make a change, it's, it's always good to revise these and look at them and see if they need to be modified, I mean, but that's why it's done by an ordinance, not necessarily through the charter. It's easy to change if you need to.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's something we definitely need. I mean, everybody needs to know what is the expectations and the guidelines to follow to move the city business forward as quickly as possible, and in a manner that is productive.
And I'll say, I did read Michael's, you know, email, and I think, you know, what he, what he said was, was reasonable. My, my take on it is, the first thing you have to do is put reasonable expectations in place on, on the way the council meetings and so forth, and the council responsibilities are to be carried out. And then if you find that those aren't achieving the end goal, you start to consider other things to put a little bit more, you know, meat around it. But I think it's a little too early right now, it's, let's do the reasonable first step, let's get it out there so everybody understands the expectations, and then it's, it's a work and process on that kind of a document, so if we find we need to modify it, we've got his input, and the city manager's got it filed, and so we'll go back and look at that and say, why isn't this working? And we can make another revision. So I do appreciate the input, because I thought it was, you know, it was well thought out, there were some, there were some good items in there. That's my comment. All right, so we've got a motion in a second.
I'd just like to clarify, that's for the second reading of an ordinance to adopt the rules and procedures for city council by caption only, is that what you meant?
That is correct.
Yes, he said by caption only, I'm sorry.
Reading of the, second reading of the ordinance by caption only, ordinance to adopt rules and procedures of city council.
Okay, we first need to do a roll call.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Moonpower?
Yes. All right, reading of ordinance by caption only now.
Ordinance to adopt rules and procedures of city council.
Is it it?
Well, now we need number?
I would move that...
So now we need a council motion, second, for adoption of the ordinance.
I move that we adopt the ordinance.
And I second.
Okay, got a motion, Mr. Hartley, second, Mr. Osborne, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Moonpower?
Yes. All right, number eight, consider a public hearing on offers received for city-owned property in the Clear Creek subdivision lots E four, E six, E ten, E eleven, and E twenty-one. So hereby open the hearing. Staff comment.
Counsel, back in February, February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, council met and passed resolutions on the procedures to be used when an offer is received for city property, and one of those was, we needed to have a public hearing on those matters. We have received offers on several lots within Clear Creek, and the offers for lots E four and E six are twenty-five thousand dollars, E ten and eleven, thirty thousand dollars,
Is that it? All right, we've got one person signed up for public comment, Michael Pollard. It's a trifecta tonight.
I've talked too much, so I'll leave it very short. The, these properties have been advertised and are currently advertised on Realtor.com for a selling price of $19,900 each and they've been listed for 47 days during what seems to be the peak of the real estate season. And if these are our only or highest offers, it seems like this will put those properties back on the tax rolls of the city. Sounds like a great idea to me.
All right, thank you. All right. No other person signed up for public comments, so hereby, close the hearing. Now we consider approval of the offers received for city-owned property in the Clear Creek subdivision, lots E4, E6, E10, E11, and E21. Staff report.
Counsel, this report will be the same identical staff report that was just given on the public hearing in regards to the lots previously mentioned.
Can you repeat those offers one more time by lot?
Lots E4 and E6, $25,000. There's two lots to be sold to one person. E10 and 11, $30,000. That's the same, it's one contract for both lots. And then E21, $19,000.
Okay, so with the pleasure of council.
Move to approve.
All right, a motion to approve by Mr. Osborne?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Wingard. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Muppower?
Yes. All right, item 10, close session pursuant to 2.23711A1, Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body personnel. Need a motion in a second.
A move that we enter executive session for the reasons stated.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Hartley, second by Mr. Osborne. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Muppower?
Yes. All right, with that, we stand adjourned.